Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Sodex City Council's special meeting for April 22nd, 2021. When during the call to roll call, please make sure council people mention the city there currently attending the meeting from in county and state. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Mayor. Dean?
Here, Sagatuck, Allagren County, State of Michigan.
Leo? Leo, you're muted.
He's doing it by phone.
She died. All right, I'm gonna go on to Louis.
Yeah, city of Sagatuck are here. City of Sagatuck, Allen County, Michigan.
Peterson?
Here, Key West, Monroe County, Florida.
Stanton?
Here, Water Valley, Van Buren County, Michigan.
Trustor?
Here, Key West, Monroe County, Florida.
Leo?
Here, Bay City, Bay County, Michigan.
Becken?
Here, Douglas, Allagren County, Michigan. Roll call is complete. All council people are in attendance. Moving through the agenda, we have no approval of minutes. There are no mayor comments. Brian, do you have anything to add to your written report?
No, just one highlight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you and good afternoon, council and guests. Just one highlight that I'd like to point out because you don't see this request every day, which is the birch bark harvesting. And this is something we can talk about at a future meeting, but I did want to point that one out. Other than that, I know that the the new items 14A, B, and C, that's a lot to digest in 24 hours. So I will just hit the highlights on those items and look forward to to that discussion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This, I have just two questions. On the tree cutting, are we going to put that up on our website and Facebook so that people are aware of it? I know it's always not contentious, but always kind of a an interesting time when trees start getting cut.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the the request is to actually strip some bark from the the birch tree, which will not damage. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Ryan. I meant the tree cutting, the tree trimming, I should have said. Are we going to let the public know that they will be on site again? I know, and everyone supposedly receives a postcard. Is that everyone in Sagatuck?
So I don't know the answer to that question, but I believe Aaron has posted that to our website. Aaron, what else have we done with that information?
Yes, that is on our website. I believe it went out in the last newsletter. And I think it's on our Facebook page. And yes, they will be sending postcards out to anybody in the area who would be affected by it.
Okay. And do they have a specific time? I didn't see that.
I do not recall seeing that detail either. I'd have to go back and look. I can get back to you.
Okay. We get an idea of that. And then the the last thing on the Park Street, the water line service replacement. What is that for? It's not on North Park. What is that for? And how much will that cost?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Brian.
So that's related to the the mandate that all municipalities have to replace lead services. And we did address this with the North Park Street project. But going forward with every future road project, that's something you want to consider looking into. And the costs are unknown. You know, the first step is to identify the services. And I think that just for North Park Street, that that cost was around $8,000. So it's going to be a significant cost moving forward. And it's just an item of consideration. So I mean, if you're going to resurface a road and that road has an expected lifespan of 15 to 20 years, it'd be a real shame to have to dig up services in the future or near future and and damage the road. So I would recommend that you do that in advance of road projects. So that's something for future discussion and your your budget discussions as well.
Thank you very much.
Any other council questions for city manager? If not, any agenda changes? Brian?
None, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Move on. We have no guest speakers for the special meetings today. Next agenda item is opportunity for public comment from our visitors today. If you wish to be, which you wish to address council, please ask to be recognized. Identify yourself, including your community of residents. Please limit your comments to three minutes on the items that appear on the agenda today. Does anyone wish to address council? Jane Underwood?
Yes, I'm right here.
Can. Yeah, I see.
Yeah, hey, come on. Okay, I read over all this last night and this morning, and I have a couple of questions, having been a teacher. First one, why should a developer's attorney tell our city council what should be included in the ordinance? Of course, this ordinance is regarding floating homes. And my second question, what prior representations were made to Dune Grass regarding the fence and floating homes? What what does this mean? I don't remember anything before the planning or the ZBA. In other words, how do we get into this mess? Three, how would the floating homes benefit the city? Would they be paying property taxes? As a member of a family that's been paying property taxes for over 100 years, there's not much land there to tax. And last one, what is the promissory estoppel claim Dune Grass has on the city? So I'm hoping some of these questions can be answered or discussed. And good luck.
Hey, thank you for your comments and your questions. I do feel some of the items that you brought up will be discussed as the, you know, as as things progress on those two two items. It may not be today, but I think over time both all those concerns will be addressed. Yep, yep. Ryan, you want to add anything to that response?
No, thanks for joining Jane and good questions. And as the mayor said, I'm sure your questions will be answered at some point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other community member which should address council?
Hi, Ryan. This is Ann Broker. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ann, this is Mayor Becken. Please, please, the floor is yours for three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. Great, thank you. So my name is Ann Broker. I live at 508 Park Street, which is located at the corner of Park and Perryman. It's almost directly across the street from Dune Grass's docks next to the chain ferry. And I wanted to speak at this meeting mainly in response to Dune Grass's letter to the council that's included in today's meeting packet. It suggests that local residents do not object to Dune Grass's proposed floating home development. I felt compelled to to speak out against that and make clear that I am opposed to development of these floating homes directly across the street from me. They are extremely unattractive, and I believe they would create a noise and traffic nuisance. And at at a minimum, I think that the development would depress property values in the area. I'm concerned they'll deprive me of full use and enjoyment of my own home, and that they'll create very serious safety problems on on an already busy park street in the summer. So I fully support the city's efforts to regulate these floating homes, given the many problems they would cause to our community. I also just wanted to quickly comment on something I noticed in the city manager's report for today's meeting, indicating that Mr. Hughley refuses to remove the dangerous and and also unattractive fence erected next to the chain ferry. My personal view is that the city should stand by its decision regarding the removal of the fence and not entertain any delay tactics on that issue. And I just wanted to to share that as well. So thank you for your time, and thank you to the city council and city staff for addressing these issues.
Thank you for your comment. I guess I'd like to make one added item is that under our communications and some of the correspondence that is appearing in our agenda, oftentimes several of those letters were sent to the council back on April 14, when city had a workshop. So they're just catching up to to this agenda. So a lot of those have been presented in a several of those have been presented in a prior meeting. So I just wanted to bring that that information to public's attention. Anyone else wish to address council?
Dan Foxer?
Dan? All yours. Is he out there?
He's on mute.
I too wanted to address what I'll call the Varnum letter that was written on behalf of Dune Grass. And I I'm not going to go through chapter and verse. Three minutes is nowhere near long enough. I wanted to address one item on there that I think gives rise to an erroneous or presents an erroneous implication. That comment, and I've quoted it here, Dune Grass relied on representations made by the city to make its investments into a Class A marina and four floating homes for short-term rentals. The implication, the erroneous implication that I mentioned, I think that makes it sound like Dune Grass had some sort of city or planning commission approval for four floating houses at the marina. At minimum, that's disingenuous, if not in fact potentially misleading. I served on the planning commission in 2017, when the marina came before the planning commission, and I still do. The Dune Grass engineering documents shared with the planning commission in 2017, graphic, and this is a graphic presentation, like looking straight down in the marina. It's a drawing of what would be take place in the marina. Oh, thank you very much. I sent this to City Hall today. Shows, as you can see there, what, one, two, three, four, five, six, six boats. Every one of them a pleasure boat, meaning they have bows. They have normal pleasure boat seating. And they have open tops in every case. No rectangular shaped floating anything, much less a home, is shown or indicated. Excuse me. My phone over there. In fact, floating homes was never mentioned in any planning commission meeting that I know that I'm aware of, and I feel quite confident that if it had been, it would have generated a good deal of controversy then, as indeed it has turned out to do these four years later. As I say, I sent those photos and you can see them there. One other point related to the 2017 Dune Grass submission to the planning commission. I'm going to quote here what was, this was on the Dune Grass document. Quote, this relating to the fence. Quote, "A two-foot-high concrete base with a four-foot-high fence is proposed along the north and west sides of the covered boat slip for security and safety reasons." I think that adds up to six feet. I'm remembering my basic math, but in no place, to my knowledge, did the planning commission ever have presented to it an eight-foot fence. So I provide that for color on this whole discussion. Thank you. Sorry for the phone.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else wish to address council today? Gary Medler?
Yes, I I've gone through the.
Identify yourself, Gary, by name and community or residence, please.
Sorry, Mayor, Gary Medler, 461 Vine Street in Sagatuck. I've gone through the city ordinance, and I've gone through each zoning district to see what is a use as a right and what are special land uses to determine if the Dune Ridge so-called floating homes or any floating homes are permitted in the ordinance, and they're not. The Dune Ridge floating homes, at the most you can say of them is they're manufactured homes. And the only provision in the ordinance is they would have to be located in mobile home parks based on the conditions imposed on mobile homes. And the zoning requirements in that C4 Resort District was known to the city and Dune Ridge. So I don't know why we're even discussing whether they can put these manufactured homes into the docks, because the only thing that can be moored at a dock, at a marina, marina, under the ordinance is a watercraft. And those manufactured homes are not boats, they're not vessels, and they're not watercraft. So what if somebody could address at the city or anyone where in the ordinance is the Dune Ridge manufactured homes or any potential floating home or houseboat permitted? Because each zoning district, particularly the ones on riverfront, it's the same analysis. They're not permitted. They constitute manufactured homes, and they're not permitted. Thank you.
Thank you for your your comments. Anyone else wish to address council, please? Aaron, see anyone up there?
I did not see anyone else, sir.
Okay. I'll close this portion of public comment. We do allow public comment closer to the end of the meeting. Same rules apply, and you can address council on any any issues you you wish to do, to wish to present to council. So moving on, we have no consent agenda this afternoon, no request for payments, no introduction of ordinances, and no public hearings. So move on to what I think is possibly our only action item today, but we'll see how the the discussion goes. But actually be the Dune Ridge fence. And turn it over to Ryan on this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is item 13A on page six of your packet, if you're following along. And what staff has laid out with cooperation of your attorney, Jeff, who is on the call, is a is a course of action for addressing the the fence issue. And Jeff has been in communication with the legal counsel from the Dune Ridge Development Team. And I and I think he has some updates. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to the attorney.
You bet. Jeff?
Afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ryan's correct. After that email was sent to Ryan yesterday or the day before, I did receive further communication earlier today from the developer's attorney. What he has communicated is that, I think in response in part to this memo being in the agenda packet, he wants to emphasize that Mr. Hughley does not want to fight over a fence. That is not his desire, and that in fact, he has already at this point apparently directed one of his associates to work with an architect and a landscape specialist to come back with a request for an application. They would like to proceed to the ZBA initially to see if they can get their variance for the fence. They recognize they're going to have to reduce the fence. They recognize that at least, or I think, I think they recognize that the style of fence that's there right now is probably not workable. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but my sense is they want to cooperate, and they are committed to submitting an application and following that process. Presumably, if they were able to get the variance or variances that they were requesting, assuming they got the approval, then they would, they've already essentially committed to then follow up with an application immediately to the planning commission to get its blessing for any plans that are needed and to proceed from there. Given where we started with this, my personal opinion is we've made some candidly pretty good progress. I would still like, however, authority from the council, and to the extent you can, you're comfortable giving it to me, to work with staff to come up with dates by which we would communicate with Mr. Hughley's attorney that there, these are the dates by which applications have to be received if we're to proceed with the ZBA and planning commission and in lieu of an enforcement proceeding. So basically, consistent with the second full paragraph of the memo, but they're going to be different dates because we'd be dealing with the ZBA rather than the planning commission. Does that make sense?
Well, you're our attorney. I hope it makes sense.
Well, it does to me. I'm never sure if it gets communicated adequately.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This Chris? I'd like to make a motion. And Jeff, you're going to have to help me because of the the date changes. Direct legal counsel to send Mr. Hughley's attorney a letter advising that he needs to get an application for the fence filed by. Is there a date change there?
A a date to be communicated by city staff. I don't think we have that yet.
Okay, to be filed by a date to be committed by city staff in order to have this matter placed on the June 17th Planning Commission.
Well, it'd be, it'd be the, yeah, their current, I'm sorry for interrupting, council member. My understanding is they want to apply to the ZBA first to see if they can get their variances. There's nothing legally that prevents them from doing that. So we'll just have to figure out what those, actually, that may expedite this a little because my guess is the ZBA may meet sooner than the planning commission otherwise would, but Cindy can.
I I have those dates, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Cindy.
The dates for the zoning board of appeals would be a deadline, a filing deadline of May 13, and a tentative special meeting on June 8. There are some conflicts with the Thursday, June 10. So it would probably be a Tuesday, June 8, and I should be able to get a quorum for that.
Perfect.
Okay. So an application of the fence filed by May 13 in order to have this matter be placed on the June 8, the ZBA Agenda for Review and Decision provides an option that if his client prefers, we can schedule a special meeting, in which case the completed application would be due to the city by June 8. If a completed application is not received by the city by what are we changing, May 23, too?
If I think so, we can strike some of that.
Okay.
Since we've set dates, can we not?
Okay. If the completed application is not removed by trying to be determined, and if it is not regardless of the reason, the city will initiate enforcement action. Period. If we are told he will not agree to comply under these circumstances, then we can begin enforcement proceedings immediately.
Okay, if I can jump in, let me.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's, that's, you're, you're, you're telling me exactly what I need to know. Let me, let me insert some different dates, though, just in light of the ZBA Planning Commission difference. So what I'm, what I'm understanding is, and I'm looking to both council member Peterson as well as Cindy to give me some direction. What I'm understanding is the deadline to get an application in for the ZBA variances requested will be May 13. A special meeting then would be held on June 8. If the application is not in by the 13th, the entire fence needs to be removed by the 14th. And if it's not, we would proceed with enforcement action on the 15th or on or about the 15th.
Are those May dates? Yes, I was May dates.
I'm, I'm good with that. Do we need that last sentence?
Probably wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll leave that as it stands.
This is Garn, Mayor.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. I think we've got the essence of the motion. It it may need to be tweaked slightly between Aaron and Ryan and the attorney slug it. Council questions, comments? Okay, if none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Peterson?
Yeah.
Louis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yeah.
Stanton?
Yes.
Trustor?
Yes.
And Becken?
Yes. A motion passes unanimously. Ryan and Aaron, if we could get a, I think, a final completed motion and send out to council in your future, I think it would be appreciated. Okay?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
No problem, sir.
Moving on to next agenda item. 13B on the agenda. Floating homes. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. So staff is laying out a timeline to address the zoning ordinance, which was the council's previous discussion is that that's the direction we ought to head, is to find the right place for floating homes and not get bogged down by trying to define them. And we've laid out some dates for you, and as long as you're good with them, we're heading in the right direction.
All right. Ken?
Go ahead if you were going to ask a question.
Yeah, I was going to just ask for comment regarding the current moratorium and proposed extension of that.
Right. So we have some, we have some time to work on that. Cindy, hit me with that date real quick. When the moratorium ends. If you're with me.
I don't know if you can hear me, but the date the moratorium expires is June 19.
June 19. So we can address it at a future meeting here. Whether or not you need to extend that. I I believe you heard comments from the attorney at the last meeting to have some, to be cautious about not extending that too far into the future. But the moratorium extension can be addressed at a future meeting.
So we can either act on this with the proposed motion that's on on the information on the screen. We can hold off to to a different date. So if there's any, any questions, but go ahead, Ken. What were you going to propose?
Yeah, I was going to move to direct staff to begin drafting documents related to floating homes for the planning commission review.
So that's a motion then, right? And seconded by, okay, we have a motion by Trustor, seconded by Louis. Further questions or comments? I would, my comment would be that all relevant communications presented to council and discussions with city staff and potentially third party to be determined later would be including and be included in this, this, this broad kind of motion. You concur with that, Ryan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I do.
All right. So Ken and Garnett are comfortable with that?
Sure.
All right, good. Any other question by council? If not, we have a clerk, please call them all, roll on the motion, please.
Yes, sir. Would you mind, please, just clarifying for me what the motion will be then?
As it appears on the, I think on the agenda. Yeah, I think it's rather broad because it says drafting documents, you know, and that could be inclusive of any information staff feels is relevant.
So did you, you don't need additional language?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Truster?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yep.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
Uh, motion passes unanimously. Uh, moving on to, uh, discussion items. Uh, new business, A, Blue Star Non-Motorized Trail. Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the long and the short of this one is that, um, you have three agreements that you're reviewing, um, and staff is recommending that you approve. Uh, the first being an inter-local agreement. And, uh, this is something that the tri-community, uh, committee was tasked with, uh, formulating and presenting to council. Uh, so they've done their work there. I will note that this is not going to be the, the full inter-local agreement. This is, um, a, a, a starting point and it really just addresses the, the engineering. Um, I, I expect that the council could see something, um, to be expanded on, uh, as it relates to this particular inter-local. Um, and the other agreement that you're looking at is for engineering services. Um, and the engineering services takes you through design, um, all the way to the grant application, um, and stops there. And the third agreement is an agreement with the Friends of the Blue Star Trail, um, which commits them to the financing, uh, which is, you know, which is a great thing for the municipalities. Uh, a couple other key points with this is that, they, they, the committee has designated me as the liaison to interface with the engineer. A couple reasons for this. One is the city of Sagatuck's portion of the trail is the, the, the most extensive. Uh, so that, that makes sense that they would designate me as a liaison. Also, I have experience with the, the main grant that they will be pursuing, which is a Transportation Alternatives Grant. Um, so that's another reason why they're designating me as liaison. Third reason is probably because I'm the new guy, right? And so like, test the new guy with, uh, the complicated stuff. Uh, no, but it's all good. Uh, I'm excited about this. Um, another point about this is that, and it should be really clear, is that the city of Sagatuck Council, you get to approve the, the final design at the end of the day. So anything that happens at the committee level, all the discussions, it gets wrapped up and it gets presented to you all, uh, and you get the final say. Um, and that you will get progress reports, um, on a monthly basis as we, as we move along. And I think the, the first grant application is, is due in October. Um, so you'll, you'll be getting plenty of progress reports and you'll get a presentation, um, again, for your final adoption. Happy to address any questions that you have on this item.
Council questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Chris.
Chris, yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan. Um, I have some questions. My understanding is, uh, this is kind of where we can talk about how, how we're understanding how this moves forward. On the first page, it says the engineering is broken out into phases and it allows the friends to not overcommit financially or for any municipality that may not want to proceed with additional fables to bail out. Um, I thought we were under the understanding that if anybody didn't go along, it jeopardized the whole project?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, this is true. This is, this is some language that's been inserted that, um, you know, doesn't make everyone happy. Uh, but the Friends of the Blue Star Trail, they, they understand it, uh, full well, um, that, you know, should any municipality get uncomfortable with this deal? Um, you know, they can, they can exit and, um, that's been, that's been made clear in this agreement. Again, that's not the, the direction that everyone hopes that this will go, but, you know, that option is out there, so. It, it just allows the city to not overcommit itself. You know, if things, for whatever reason, go sideways, you can, you can bail out. And bail out is a term, uh, probably not a technical term, but one that, uh, that you'll probably see going forward.
Okay, um, the changes in scope that are described, it says that they would go to the project liaison and do any changes in scope then have to ultimately go before each of the municipality boards? Or is that decided by the tri-community committee?
Yeah, I, I think the changes in scope, um, well, you're entering into the engineering agreement. Um, so you are a direct party to that. So changes in scope as it relates to the engineering agreement, uh, would need to go back in, in front of the council.
Okay, and then it talks about, um, approving the design is at the end of this, um, at the end of the engineering phases, will that be the, the final design that we've all agreed on or will that have to then be agreed upon? When does the agreeing come? During the engineering phase or after they come up with it?
It's a good question. It's one that we, um, that we discussed with the engineering, engineering firm, uh, yesterday. Uh, we being the township manager, city manager, Friends of the Blue Star Trail, Holly Leo as the, as the chairperson. And the answer to that is that we will present, we will present to council the, the final plan. Let me just ask the question again so I make sure I'm answering the right one.
Okay, well, it talked about, um, the step-by-step how to come up with the design. And then after they come up with the design, is that going to go back then to the each municipality to agree with that design? Or will, or will it be, be done before that?
Okay, great. That's what I thought you were asking. Um, so what, what I've, um, that what the committee will be doing, that, you know, you have two representatives. You have Holly and you have Ken, uh, on the, on the committee. And so the, they'll be checking, checking in with council early and often on the design.
I can actually.
And then at the, at the end of, uh, before the design gets adopted, it goes to council for, for final adoption. And Holly, go ahead and help me out. I think you're trying to jump in.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Holly. Have we lost Holly?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say is Chris.
There you go.
Can you, can you all hear me?
You're all set now. You bet. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry, my, my internet connection.
Oh.
We lost you, Holly.
My, my connection is wonky, so bear with me. And the answer is yes. The design, Chris?
Yeah, I'm on it.
Holly, if, if I'm, if I can help, try turning off your video and just leave your audio on. And you, and you might have a little bit better luck. Your audio is cutting in and out really, really a lot.
Chris?
If I could jump in, I think I picked up enough from, uh, Holly and Ryan that answered my questions. Um, so I'm, I'm good.
Okay, thank, yeah, thank you.
Other council questions? Scott?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to recommend the draft inter-local agreement, draft engineering agreement and draft Friends of the Blue Star Trail be approved, subject to any needed additional and legal review.
The design comes back. Yeah.
Hold, hold, hold off, Holly. We're actually getting a motion.
Okay, how about, is that better?
Yeah, but just hold off and.
Is it better? No, not better.
Yeah, that is better.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Hear you now. However.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, here's where we're at currently. Uh, Scott Dean has the floor and is going to make a motion. Once that is, uh, if it receives a second, then we'll bring you back in for comments. How's that?
Great, thank you, Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Scott.
All right, I'll take it from the top, Mayor.
Yeah.
Recommend the draft inter-local agreement, draft engineering agreement and draft Friends of the Blue Star Trail be approved, subject to any needed additional staff and legal review. Delegate authority to the mayor to execute the agreements.
Second. Yeah, Lauren's got it.
Okay, so a motion by Dean seconded by Stanton. Uh, comments from council, starting off with, uh, Holly Leo, please.
Okay, so, um, Chris, to answer your question, yes, design comes back to this council. So, and, and Ken and I will keep you apprised. Um, also, uh, I wanted to point out that the township in Douglas have, um, have approved these agreements. Um, what we've done is, these are really administrative functions for the city managers and the attorneys, um, to do these agreements. Um, and so they, we've allowed them to work these things out. Um, and just keep the committee apprised. Um, and we chose, the engineering firm that we chose because they had the most experience designing and building bike trails in Michigan. Um, and they also factored in the fire department. They're pre-qualified with MDOT for grant writing. And I will point out that Ryan did get the biggest MDOT grant in Wisconsin. I gotta give him a little, a little shout out for that. Um, and he built a beach-to-beach, uh, bike trail already. Um, and this C2AE engineer has experience with multi-jurisdictional bike trails, which includes these difficult inter-local agreements. They're also gonna help us with public engagement and community outreach. And they have familiarity with tourism-driven communities. So, um, we are tasked in, in the resolution that formed our committee with the agreements that are before you. They have gone before the township in Douglas and this allows us to move forward in a partnership with this engineer we're really excited about. And I think they will help us, um, you know, really, uh, complete the process. You know, in a, in a very clear way.
Okay, thanks, Holly. Uh, other council comment?
Mr. Mayor, this is Ryan. I recognize him, not council. I just wanna make one correction to Holly's statements.
Okay.
Uh, the, so it is true that, um, the village of Egg Harbor received the largest transportation alternatives grant in, in the state of Wisconsin. Awesome. It was not for the beach-to-beach trail. It was for a, a highway project, uh, that went through the village that included bike lanes, um, and new sidewalk facilities. Minor correction, but just wanna make sure that's accurate.
Minor correction, but still awesome. Got it.
All right, thank you. Uh, other council comment? I've got a couple of points of clarification. Uh, if, if I could ask Aaron to go back to page one of the agenda item, please. Zero one N. Ryan, if I get some clarification on item two, uh, the three main engineering phases. Now, apparently the motion is approving all three phases. That's, um, uh, uh, currently on the floor. Question I got is, I would assume that we will see a conceptual design on a, on a kind of a progressional basis before we start filling out the application. So there's some, uh, consensus or agreement on a conceptual sign, conceptual design, and that then could be subject to, uh, approval, rejection, or modification. How, how, how do these steps work, I guess, even though we're, you know, approving all three?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the question. And so for clarification, the engineering agreement that you have in front of you is for the first phase of the engineering, which is conceptual design and grant application.
So that's what we're approving to the seat today?
That's correct.
Maybe I missed that. I, I apologize if I missed that in the motion.
No, no worries.
Oh, okay. My second question is more of a, again, clarification. And I, you know, and maybe you know this, maybe you don't, maybe Ken or Holly know. It, it mentions in the agreement that it's a four-point-five mile stretch of bike path between Soddy Township Douglas and, so Douglas, Soddy, City Soddy Township, four-point-five, five miles. It does not state the terminus, the start and the finish, that four-point mile stretch. Has that been identified yet?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to address that. I think Holly's prepared to address that as well. Um, yes, that has been identified. In fact, um, Holly has made it a point to include the map of the trail in each committee meeting to reinforce the, the extent of the geography of the, of the trail.
Yeah, is that something I missed in the handout, any information we got today?
No, that, that, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
So do we approximately know the start and finish of the four-point-five mile stretch? It's, I think it's more certainly important information. So Holly or Ken have that?
Yes. Yes, so, so Mayor, what it does is it, it connects Sagatuck to Douglas and then it proceeds, um, down the Blue Star and, um, we're not exactly sure or how we're gonna, um, you know, I will send you the map that we use, buddy. Um, but basically what it does is we're, we're, it's an excellent question and the entire committee asked this question and we had a meeting about it. And I will send you the map because what we're trying to do is connect the three communities and we're trying to, trying to tie into the, uh, Sagatuck Township trails that already exist.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm sure if it can be routed to, Ryan can get that out to council. I think all of us would like to see it. Okay, any other further questions?
It's an excellent question. It's an excellent question because it's, it's, we've talked about this for so many years and it's, it's difficult to conceptualize what are we talking about exactly? So I welcome the question and, um, I will include it and maybe it could even be included in the next packet. Or, um, I don't know, I just will try to make that public.
No rush, but I appreciate that. Uh, any other further questions or comments from council?
Um, Mayor, this is Garn. It's not a question, just a, just a comment. Um, you know, I really appreciate the time and the effort and the energy that's been put into this. I know it's been a, a difficult year with COVID, but the, the committee has taken on this task. Um, so I commend the committee, our two members from the council, um, certainly Holly's leadership and the involvement of the Blue Star Trail, our friends there. Uh, this is, uh, we're moving in the right direction and, uh, I feel really confident while we're going. I, I appreciate the efforts they put into selecting the engineering firm. Uh, they did their due diligence. Um, so my sense is this, they've been very transparent about this, very open about this. Um, and I look forward to seeing this come to closure. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, any further questions or comments? If none, would the clerk please call a roll on the motion?
Yes, sir. Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Truster?
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you, and Becken.
Yes. Okay. A motion passed unanimously. Moving on, next agenda item, the Eagle letter and draft response, uh, from KLSWA. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this one's probably spinning some heads. Uh, the long and the short of this one is that, uh, the letter received from Eagle addresses, uh, perceived or actual deficiencies in the waters, the water system that services Lake Town Township portions thereof, Sagatuck Township, city of Sagatuck, um, and the city of the village of Douglas. And we received the letter and, uh, KLWA has been very responsive to the letter. Um, and basically what Eagle is asking is to, uh, know, uh, exactly who owns what as it relates to the water system. Who owns the pipes? Um, and how do they operate? And, um, if things, uh, break, uh, who pays for them? So they're, they're basically up, asking for an operations and maintenance plan. And, um, we, KLWA, KLSWA has laid out a corrective action plan, which is in the packet. Um, so that's the, that's the short explanation of, of this item. Happy to address any questions if you have any. Happy to address any questions if you have any.
We're not really looking for a, a final approval because we still have some more information to, to include in this. Is that right or wrong? I know we have a deadline of April 31st to submit it, submit the documents. So is there something you think we should have action on Monday night?
You know, I, I, I would appreciate it. The, yeah, they're, they're asking, I could have administrative approval on this, but you know, the reason I want councils to be aware of this and have, have some discussion and lend some support.
I, I think we should move that on to the agenda Monday night for action, give council an opportunity to maybe delve into it a little bit more. And I might have some additional comments from a, you know, Kalamazoo Lake sewer and water perspective also. So I guess, any questions on this now? Or everyone comfortable with going on to the next item? Okay, moving on now, preliminary budget discussion?
All right, item 14C, page 50 of your packet. We got Peter on the call as well to help me out where help is needed. Basically, wanted to introduce the budget, allow you to start looking at some numbers. We laid out a timeline in the, in the, in the page that is in front of you now. The basic idea is to, one, introduce it tonight. And then Peter and I would like to meet with council, one-on-one, or a couple members of council just to go over it in detail, recognizing that some of you all are, are new to council. So just to explain how the, the, the different funds work and, and so forth. And then that really, that education is gonna tee up or prepare you for your discussion at the strategic planning session. And you're gonna be focusing on some of your discretionary budget expenses. So you'll be walking into that meeting knowing how much money is available and, and other concerns as it relates to your budget. And then you'll have an opportunity to discuss at your, your June workshop, trying to finalize the budget with a final approval at the public hearing at the end of June, 6/28. And so that's, that's the basic summary. And Peter, I don't know if you would like to add anything at this time?
No, that, that sums it up quite well. Yeah, so basically I talked to one council person. So if everybody, if the council could just basically, you know, send an email, we can get something scheduled for everybody, you know, one at a time, or a couple of you at a time to come to City Hall. We can meet upstairs in the council chambers and go through the entire budget. The general funds, the most critical one, and then basically then at the strategic planning on the 20th, we need to prioritize what projects would like to be in the 2022 budget from the discretionary side.
That's great.
Okay, council, questions or comments?
Mayor?
Yes, Scott?
I, I think it's a great idea. I think we've got a very ambitious kind of set of things to go through for this, the planning session. So the more we can do to front-end load it, the better, in my opinion.
All right, other council comment?
Second those thoughts.
Yeah, I, this is Holly. I agree with Scott.
A couple of dates we're dealing with, especially in the dates in June are mandated in our charter. There's also would be a, there's gonna be a public hearing in there also relative to the budget prior to adoption. So just thought I would, you know, bring that up, that these are just not dates that were Ryan and Peter pulling out of their hat. Any other comment by council? If not, leave it up to each individual council person to do their homework and make an appointment with Peter and Ryan. And we'll all get educated a little bit better on, in our budget process. Moving on, next agenda item, Fourth of July fireworks. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received an email from business owner, Mr. Mike Johnson, who said that he'd like to approach council with the idea of holding a Fourth of July fireworks display. And you and I discussed the fact that we could certainly throw him on the agenda for a discussion.
Yeah, I think it would, this would be a good, good, good opportunity to have some discussion, dialogue back and forth with, with Mike. So Mike, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Volume's okay? Okay, Mike Johnson here from Sagetuck, Michigan. I've approached all of you before about fireworks because I, I think it's an integral part of the celebrations throughout the summer in Sagetuck. Of course, I look at it from the business standpoint. And, and I believe we can, I have, I, last year, in fact, when I approached the, the, you guys, the council, I didn't, I, I don't even know if I told you I had the funding. I actually had like $15,000 raised through donors, private donors. Now, I would assume these same, I, I didn't take the money, obviously. I, I, I just took their pledge. And the, these will, I'm sure them and many more will donate to this. And we're talking about quite big donations, you know, $2,000 apiece, a lot of them. I, I feel as though, as I, that due to the fact, not due to the fact, but one of the other things I wanna bring up is Grand Rapids is having them on the third. I see, I just was reading through my emails, and I see Muskegon is doing it also. So it isn't as though, you know, we're the only ones doing it, and so everyone's gonna flock here. I hope they do, but you know, that, that, that's gonna be some people's concern. I wanted, I, I just wanna lay this out, and then I'd be more than happy to answer questions if I, if I could from anyone.
Okay. As council is aware, a couple of meetings ago, we had a, a discussion relative to fireworks and Fourth of July celebrations. And I think we basically did not close the door, that we would keep, keep, keep our options open. Now we're about a month later, and various things have, you know, happened. So, you know, so anyways, setting the table for that. Mike, give me one more comment.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I did wanna say, the, the reason I even got involved, I thought perhaps the Rotary Club might do it this year. And then as soon as I found out they weren't going to do it, and now they were, but, but in fact, I had Jim Sullivan call me, and he wanted me to get on board with the 9/11 celebration, which I think is after the fact, more or less. But you know, that's fine if that's the way you guys wanna do it, or decide to do it. I just feel as though, as a business owner, I, I feel as though these fireworks mean more than anything. Not that it brings too many, or how do I say, all that many people to town because there'll be other places doing fireworks. But it, it's just a great part of the celebration for our country. That's all I wanted to say about that.
Okay, Mike, if I can just maybe before council chimes in, if I can maybe have you clarify a couple of items for, for us. Is there a drop dead date in mind, the date that, hey, you know, once we, you know, that type of?
I realize it's quite, it's, you know, it's quite a bit more to do. Besides, I've spoken with the, with Richard, the fireworks expert. I should know his name, his last name. I don't. But he, I just spoke with him yesterday, in fact, and he said, gave me the price, and he said that actually the, what did I wanna say? I just lost my thought. Anyhow, I spoke with him, and he, he says, you know, very feasible to do. The only thing is, he, he said that he wanted me to be sure and tell you guys he has $10 million in insurance. But, but we, I realize we have other hurdles besides the council. Here we have Douglas, obviously for the load-in. I'm not sure what, you'd have to point out what other hurdles, but we do have the money. I, I, not yet, but I'm, I know I can get it. And so I, so did I answer your question?
Kinda, sorta. How about, I assume it's Mike Night Magic, who traditionally uses Sagetuck. Did he say, hey, Mike, I need to know by May 15?
Oh, I see. No, he didn't. I would think we need to move along fairly fast. And, and, and the good, and the, and the thing, of course, I didn't wanna tell you, but I mean, we all know about it, the majority, well, we'll see how that goes, but the majority of us are going to be vaccinated by then. By the Fourth of July, we're talking about two more months, three months? I mean, so if you're worried about people bumping into each other and everything, well, you, I'm sure we'll still have to social distance and, and all the whole everything. But I just feel that, that to keep, I would ask you to keep an open mind about doing this. And, and, and of course, obviously, I would like you to tell me to go ahead and get it finished. But, but, but please ask me whatever you need to add.
Sure, sure. I, I, I think we're, we're all appreciated, not only this effort on your behalf, but all, everything that you've been doing relative to the business community over the many, many years. So I don't think anyone is less than very appreciative for, for, for your efforts regarding this. So I'll turn over to council now for any questions from Mike, or general comments regarding his proposal.
Mayor, I'll start.
Sure, Scott.
I'm supportive. You know, Michigan has had a tough run this spring with COVID. But, you know, I think there are signs of hope. I was just looking at the state's data. Positivity rate is, seems to have peaked, seems to be dropping somewhat. Let's hope that trend continues. The state's at a 33% vaccination rate. The administration has actually put Parker down for July 4th as an opportunity. Hopefully, that if everyone does their part, we might be in a position to, to hopefully celebrate in this country. So yeah, the fact that they're a lot safer than, than indoor gatherings, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ken?
I agree with Scott. I think, you know, we've been locked down for a long time, and, and the trends, despite the huge spike that we've had in the last couple of months, I think the trend is inevitably in the right direction, given the vaccination program and so on. Obviously, we've gotta take our direction from the health authorities, you know, and what they advise in terms of limiting crowd size and such. But this is an outdoor event, and as Scott mentioned, we're headed towards a more highly vaccinated population. You know, so I think at this point, barring some really unforeseen turn for the worse, I wanna keep an open mind and encourage Mike to go ahead with, with some plans. And also I love him for all the work that he's done to, to do this. It's a, it's a tremendous contribution to the community.
Thanks, Ken.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chris.
Yes.
I agree with what's been said. Mike, thank you so very much. We'll all keep our fingers crossed and keep our masks on, and hopefully we'll see the fireworks Fourth of July.
Thanks, Chris. Other council comments?
Yes, Mayor, this is, go ahead, Holly.
It's Holly.
Yes, Holly.
Go ahead, Garn.
You're good, Holly, go.
No, go ahead, Garn.
Yeah, it's all good.
I was gonna say, go ahead.
All right, Garn out, Louis.
Okay. Who's on first? So I'm assuming, and this is a general question, that Mike and any group involved with this would need to submit a special event permit. Is that correct? I see nods. Then I would also assume that a plan would be included in that as far as how to ensure social distancing, regardless of the fact of whether folks have been vaccinated or not. Is that correct?
I would assume that's, go ahead. Yeah, I would assume that, so those, those are still the existing mandated rules, right?
Right, so, you know, I, I think back to the special event permit that we approved with the SCA, which was very thorough, had diagrams and explanations on how they were going to ensure social distancing. So Mike, my question for you is, who's going to help you do all this?
That's a good question. I would think, you know, not many of you remember these times, except maybe Mark Becken, he was there then. But there were years ago, we used to have the state police at the both entrances of the city, and they regulated how many people could come to town. Usually they would put the cars there after the town was packed. But that, you know, so if, if in fact we could regulate it in some way like that. Now, where the gathering points, people just migrate to private property owners like my own, like my own place here. And I would think that it would be up to us, each private property owner, to make, you know, take care of that, to social, make sure they're, you know, the, the groups are, are separated.
So Mike, you know, you're in front of the City of Sagetuck Council, so we all know that Cawhon Park becomes quite packed with individuals in what we know as, know as a normal year. So how would you ensure that folks are socially distanced?
Yeah, I would assume the Allegan County Police could be down there. They're, they're all over. And now with the social district, they're, they're putting on more people. I'm, I'm sure they could possibly help us out with that. I would take care of my property. The Butler, I'm sure, would take care of their property. Those seem to be the gathering places, the places, obviously, on the water. I would, you know, appeal to, to each individual to, 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 I mean, I, I could run around each place, but I, I don't think I could make it. That's how I would do that.
So, you know, basically I'd need to see a site plan first and see how those questions would be addressed before I can approve it.
The, it would be part of the event, the event, you know, the event application and be working with city staff. And I think, you know, that, that would be part of the, part of the procedure. So I think what Mike's looking for is just, hey, is it worth going to the next step? He still has to work out things with Douglas, you know, and there, there are steps he needs to go through. So I, I, I kind of, along with Ken and Scott, you know, and Chris is, yeah, let, let, let's not close the door, let's hear the plan. And we got basically 10 weeks. If we look back 10 weeks, we're, we're back in what, early parts of February. There wasn't a whole lot of vaccinating going on early parts of February. We're just starting to ramp up. So hopefully that, looking ahead, we'll see the same amount of success regarding the vaccination as, at least one of the, the issues that needs to, you know, come into play. So any other council comment? Holly?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, it's Holly.
You're there.
I support the idea. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Hear you.
Okay. I, I agree with Scott. I support the idea of the fireworks. Every event that's come before us for the summer has been predicated on where the CDC and the governor, you know, whatever restrictions are in place. And so my question to Mike is if, for some reason, I mean, if we need to push back a month, or if there's something going on. I mean, sometimes you have to do that for weather anyway, right?
Yeah, I believe. They usually put them off a day or so if, if the weather's bad.
Okay, so I mean, the, obviously there, there is, there's an aspect to this that none of us know. Of course, we want fireworks. We love having the fireworks. It's, it's a big part of the town in the summer, and we all want it to happen. It's it's a big part of the town in the summer and we all want it to happen. So I would just, you know, approach it as we have all the other events. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lauren? I think she might have.
I'm still here, sorry.
There you are.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the option of having Fourth of July fireworks. I applaud Mike Johnson for taking the lead on this and, you know, trying to make it happen this year. I think there's ways that we can space things out in the various parks. So maybe a blanket is set up per family and then make those, you know, six feet apart. There's ways we can make this happen. It doesn't have to be so difficult, we can make this happen. So that's how I feel about the whole thing. And if anything needs to be submitted to planning commission, we'll make that happen too.
All right, Lauren.
That's very sweet, thank you.
All right, reporting from beautiful Water Valley Track Stadium. Go Sagittuck. I'm leaving to go to a high school baseball game after this meeting, so. I'm with you and supporting. So any other comments, Mike? It looks like you've got some, go ahead, Ken, I'm sorry. I thought you just waited.
I was just going to let Mike know that he's dealing with Dick Wilson at Night Magic. That's his last name.
Yeah, you know, actually, it came up in my phone when he called me, it's Kathy Wilson. That's my ex-mother-in-law. And I, what does she want?
He's a great guy. He's done the Venetian fireworks for us for years and really does a great job.
Yeah, yeah, he really is. I just like to, I guess, if we're looking at some closure on this, or closure is a bad word, some decision, I guess if I could, if there's some way I could have a preliminary, preliminary go ahead with with the fact that I have to have the plan and everything submitted and all the details, I appreciate that and I wouldn't be wasting any time.
Well, I think you've got, you know, some encouragement from council and support. I guess your next step would be to to meet with city staff and start the the event application process, which will get us. And when we get that presented to us, that's the next time we can 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 address it, discuss it. So, okay, dokie.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, all right, thanks again, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Next, this is a final opportunity for, or another opportunity for public comment. So if you wish to address council, please ask to be recognized. Identify yourself by your name in a community of residence and limit your comments to three minutes. Any comments from the public? Yeah, Aaron?
I don't see anybody.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, everybody, for attending.
Too soon, I hear someone.
Too soon.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's Richard Donovan, Sagittuck Township.
Gotcha.
May I proceed?
Absolutely.
Just very briefly, I wanted to thank the council for approving the three agreements for the Blue Star Trail. And I wanted to give a shout out to Holly and Ken and Ryan for all the hard work they've done in moving this thing forward. We're very excited about C two AE, the engineering firm, which was selected after a process where we started with ten different firms in the state and and wintered it down to C two. And we think they're going to do a great job. And to answer your question specifically, Mr. Mayor, yes, of course, we know the endpoints of the four and a half miles. The four and a half miles includes where the trail currently ends at the south end in Douglas and goes north along the Blue Star Highway up to Holland Street in Sagittuck Township. And then the, you know, the exact configuration and and the route through the township in particular remain to be determined, but we look forward to working on that. And thank you all again for your attention.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Any other individual out there wish to address council? If none, we'll move on. We have communications. I assume some of these that we just may want to include them in the council packet for the regular meeting also. We've touched on, I think, a few items that'll be on the agenda. We have anything else to share regarding the agenda Monday night, Ryan?
I don't believe we do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, so you'll be getting that information out to us in the next twenty-four hours. We're not, we don't have any boards or commissions reports. Do we have any council comment before we wrap it up?
Mr. Mayor, real quick, this is Garn. One of the the events, the Tri-Community Recycling Committee is hosting a composting, a backyard composting event this Saturday at the old Calico location, which is now flat. The rain date is May the fifteenth. And so we just wanted to get that word out to folks in case it rains and pours. Other than that, the other report can wait till Monday.
All right. Okay, thank you. Any other council comment? Yes, whoever, was that Holly?
Oh, this is Holly. Yeah, I just had a.
Lost her again.
Can you hear me?
Yep, now we can.
I'm going in and out like a old radio.
All right.
I just, I have a point of clarification regarding pop-up patios. So every restaurant that has a pop-up patio or had one in twenty twenty, do they need to renew with the city and the MLCC for twenty twenty-one? And I'm just throwing that out there probably for Cindy and wanting clarification so we can let folks know.
Yeah, why don't we have Cindy give us an update at the next council meeting regarding that? Either direct from herself or via Ryan?
Awesome, thank you. That's that's the end of my comments.
Okay, all right, anyone else?
Mayor.
Scott.
Just to build on what Holly said, it would be nice to get a report from from Ryan, Cindy, possibly Lieutenant Enfield, on how the social district is going, how many businesses are participating? If we're having any issues, once again, just like pop-up patios, having the social district are two key elements, people safe when they come to visit this community. Because once again, we had, we had a discussion about COVID. And as we said earlier, we can't control the virus and we can't control people's behavior. But we do know that things like wearing masks, keeping people outside are helpful. So it'd be great to get a report on how that's going.
Your staff is, you're in your request. I see Ryan shaking his head.
Noted.
Okay, all right, any other comment, council? If none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move, Mr. Mayor?
Moved by Peterson. Seconded by Dean. Clerk, please call the roll.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Traster?
Yes.
And Becken?
Yes. Thanks, everybody, for attending. Enjoy the rest of the day.
Enjoy your games and track meets.
Yeah, stay warm, Lauren.